And I see there, I don't believe there are any public comments. I don't see any speakers there. Could everyone please join me now for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation available. I don't know if we have a need for that this morning, but Alma.
Yes, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Alma Flores, y si necesitan de un intérprete estoy disponible. Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. And we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. I would like to move now to C2, Announcement of Closed Session Action. On B1, Public Employment Superintendent, we have no reportable action. On B2, Public Employment Principal, we do have action, and I would like to report that the Board has moved to ratify Lito Garcia as the new principal of Santa Barbara Junior High School. The motion was made by Parker, seconded by Heron, 4-0, in favor with Cordero absent. So we'd like to congratulate our new principal, and we hope to see him soon at one of our meetings. I'd also just like to mention that Board President Annette Cordero is not here with us today. She's recovering nicely, however, from knee surgery and says to say hello to everyone. I don't believe we have any public comments, so if not, we will move on to our conference agenda. This is the first reading of these Board policies. However, Board, we may choose to approve them today and move them from consent to action if we feel that we're ready at this time to do that. So I would suggest we just dive in and begin with D1, which is the First Reading of Selected Board Policies, Administrative Regulations, and Exhibits in the 0000 series. And I see Robin Sowaski as the resource person.
Thank you, Rob. Yes, Robin is not with us today. I'd like to reiterate what you just said. In fact, I'd like to quote our Board policy on first readings and second readings, which says that the superintendent or designated shall develop and present a draft policy for a first reading at a public board meeting. At its second reading, the Board may take action on the proposed policy, and this is the critical part, the Board may waive the second reading or may require an additional reading if necessary. So the Board can, by Board action, waive that second reading. And that's Board Policy 9310, which is a Board bylaw. This first series is a set of policies in the 000 section. The first ones have to do with goals for the school district, then comprehensive local plan for special education, comprehensive safety plan, school accountability report card, and finally Title I, Program Improvement Schools. And we have staff members who have been directly involved in reviewing these policies. So if you'd like to proceed, we don't really have a presentation on these policies, but if you have questions about them, I think we can answer your questions. And you have a revised D1 on the dais here, which is part of Board Policy, oh, it's the Administrative Regulation 0450, which is on the, excuse me, comprehensive safety plan.
Okay, well, it's helpful, I have to say, to have the summary of changes for us at the beginning of each of these sections. And maybe, given past practice, what we should do is just begin with the large number 1 and go through these. And each Board member, if you have comments or changes, amendments that you'd like to recommend, we can discuss those.
I actually have no revisions for the zeros.
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, to me, there's a huge difference between BP-0200 now and what this is. In the very first paragraph, currently, we talk about focus goals. In this, we're talking about long-term goals. And it says your goals should consider the following areas, and there's 14 of them, which to me is in conflict with the last sentence of the very first paragraph, which says shall be limited in number so as to be reasonably achievable, which is what is currently the policy. When you're talking about focus goals, we had a very limited number. But there's no way you can have, I don't think, long-term goals covering 14 areas and keep it limited in number. To me, that sentence was left in from the previous one, but doesn't apply when you're talking about long-term goals versus focus goals. So I think the shall be limited in number should probably be deleted.
So just end after priorities?
Yes. Because they're long-term. And it's very broad. When you read each of these, it's almost like a strategic plan concept. It's not like we've been, when we've gone through focus goal sessions the last three years that I've watched, it's very limited, and it doesn't cover 14 areas.
And those are annual goals.
Right, right. Those are annual goals. And it does say at the sentence right begin above number 1, "When developing the district's goals, the Board shall consider the following areas." So it's not mandated, but merely that we should take these into account and consider them.
And I don't, you can in a limited number.
Do you think we should deal with that concept? Because this list of 14 are considerations about these. I mean, the intention was still to have annual goals that are fairly limited so that we can really focus on them, but we wanted to consider these areas as part of them. I mean, we didn't want to have goals attached to these concepts.
But you've eliminated what used to be adopt focus goals, to change it to adopt long-term goals. To me, those two are in conflict.
I agree. And Mr. Heron, I think that your suggestion makes a lot of sense. We may want to think about an AR or an exhibit at some point that describes this, because this, to me, this is a, like, you'd need to delineate a strategic plan and monitoring long-term goals versus setting annual focus goals. And it would be great for us to establish that at some point, so, and a timeline for when those happen, but this is about long-term goals.
And look at, on page 3, a quarter of the way down, after 14, there is a sentence there that talks about develop a strategic plan. And that's new language also.
And welcome, new language. And I would just say, I'm fine with adding the period at the end of priorities, if we can streamline that. And then, knowing that we have fully intend to come back to our Board focus goals and ideally develop a strategic plan within the next coming year, that would seem to be an opportune time to come back and look at an AR if we wanted one that spelled out the process. Okay, so no, are there any other changes then?
I have.
Yes.
So for a first-time reader, I was actually looking at some of the consistencies in format, and I have a few that I actually found very helpful, but they were in some and they weren't in others. If you look at page 7, AR 0430, what we've done in some policies is every time that we're going to define a term or that we're going to clarify what that term means, we italicize it, and we don't do that here. So if you look at least restrictive environment, that should probably be italicized.
What page are you on, sorry?
Page 7, AR 0430. Is that what you're looking, yeah, you have it. Yeah.
Are you suggesting that free, appropriate, public education, IEP, Individualized Education Program?
I think least-
Are you suggesting that all of those be?
Least restrictive environment. So it's that third paragraph, and then it says means that. You're actually going to define it there. So that should be italicized.
What about in the first paragraph, when you're defining free and appropriate public education?
That should probably also be italicized. Special education, and then specially designed instruction. So it looks like it's almost like that first word or two of the paragraphs of that section, and also surrogate parent. And I actually found that very useful, because I knew that if I was looking for a definition, I would go to the italicized part.
So it would just be the term that would be italicized?
The term that, yeah, that's going to be defined or described. And we do that in other policies.
So you're saying it's just the words, free, appropriate, public education is italicized, not anything else in that paragraph?
No, 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 not anything else.
And then least restrictive environment.
Yes.
And I'm sorry.
And then the fourth paragraph, special education. And then the last paragraph on page 1, specially designed instruction. And then page 8, first paragraph, surrogate parent.
Okay. That's a good suggestion.
And IEP in the first paragraph, Individualized Education Program?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
In the first paragraph?
Well, it's down almost the end of that first paragraph.
Yeah, that's not followed by a definition, though.
Oh, that's not-
No, it's not followed by a definition. It's only a-
I think it's only when it's followed by a definition.
So something means.
Right, right. The word means follows the word that should be italicized.
Good.
That actually, probably you could-
Just be generic.
Do a change all and find the word means, and that would be an easy way to locate those.
Well, interestingly enough, we don't do, we don't write a means next to everything. So if you look at page 20, AR 052, 0520.2.
Page number?
Page 20.
Thank you.
We see that same thing again. We say definitions, and then we list four different definitions.
With a colon after them.
Mm-hmm. So it's, I mean, as long as they're italicized, I actually feel it's really useful for the reader to know that there'll be a description. So that page, we have bullet points, 1 through 4, and then at the, down at the bottom of the page, numerically significant subgroups and program improvement.
Program improvement school, altogether, all italicized, since it then says it's a school.
Yeah.
Dr. Sarvis, are you capturing these changes?
Got them.
Okay.
I can also email them, because there's a few. That's it.
I've captured those.
Good.
It'd be nice if Ms. Lamont could be a, to look at these and let Dr. Sarvis know what else she finds in those, in that type of thing.
If you do find others, we'd be happy to make those changes.
I have them all throughout, so.
Oh, all right.
Just so you know.
Okay, so no other comments, though, on the 0000 series?
Oh, no, I have some more.
Okay.
On page 9, and I'm just curious as to the reason on, about 2/3 of the way down, the Board shall approve the plan, this is on safety plans, the Board shall approve the plan at a regularly scheduled meeting. The current policy says the Board shall approve the plan at a regularly scheduled meeting, and the adoption of the plan shall not be a consent item. I'm just curious. I have my own things about these safety plans to begin with. I don't like to see them on the consent calendar. I think they're too meaningful and it's too much. And I would like the opportunity to discuss them on the agenda rather than having to withdraw it and put it at the end of the agenda. Then you have a group of, you know, I wonder why did we take out that it won't be on a consent calendar?
Well, if your preference is to have them on the open session, we can certainly do that, I would be a little reluctant to demand that they be placed on that open agenda because there are sometimes so many items that the Board wants to discuss, but we need to get that in between 6:30 and 10 o'clock, and we're forced to additional meetings. You know, we're putting more and more things on consent when we think that there won't be discussion. It's, in fact, that whole decision about whether it's on consent or whether it's on open session is something that I make with the Board President, depending on whether we think the Board will want to discuss something. So if it's safety plans, then we know that you'll want to discuss it. I wouldn't put that demand in policy.
It's been on the policy. That's my, I mean, it has been policy, and now we're changing it. And it almost seems to denigrate the importance of it by saying, oh, let's just put it on there and we'll just approve it.
Well, then I guess we're going in the direction you'd like us to go.
If I may, my suspicion is that it was probably previously in ed code, that it had to be on open session, and that might be a change, that now it can be in consent. It's probably a CSBA policy change, although I'll, I think I'll just pull up Gamut and have Gamut here in just a moment.
Yeah, the policy was that you had to, it had to cover three areas. So the three areas were changed. I don't know that that meant you couldn't have it on, that you had to have it on the main calendar. I just-
But I'm fine with saying that it's going to be open session and specifying that it's going to be open session.
So the real issue we're looking at is whether it's mandatorily not on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I would like then the current policy to be transferred into this, that takes this one sentence and adds, "And the adoption of the plan shall not be a consent item."
We can do that. Well, can we state that in a different way, that the adoption of the plan will be considered an open session?
Is consent not open session?
I don't know what, an open session is, it can be on the consent calendar.
Or on the action agenda?
Action agenda.
That could, that would work, on the action agenda.
And the adoption of the plan shall be on the agenda as an action item?
As an action item, okay, good, thank you.
But consent agenda items are action items also.
You're right.
So I think it needs to be action agenda.
Shall be placed on the action agenda?
Yeah, adoption of-
Adoption of the plan shall be placed on the action agenda?
I guess I'm not quite sure why shall not be a consent item is, doesn't say the same thing. Maybe it's a-
Well, we can, we can do that. We can make sure it's not a consent item.
Do you have language that you want to read that?
Yeah, do you have something specific?
The current language just says after the word scheduled meeting, "and shall not be a consent item."
Okay, got it.
Sounds good.
On, on that same page, actually about two sentences before, "Each school shall forward the safety plan to the Board for approval." The school, what if we change it to say the schools, that, page 9, that same page, "The school's safety plan shall be forwarded to the Board for approval," because they don't really forward it to us.
You're right. It doesn't come directly from the site. So, I mean, it's funneled through the district office.
And I believe this is simply ed code language, and actually, technically, it does get sent to the Board through Student Services or through Robin Sowaski's office in the absence of Student Services, but we can change that wording.
I think a lot of this language is CSBA kind of boilerplate language, and so if we want to modify it, ours-
Would you say it again, please?
"The school's safety plan shall be forwarded to the Board for approval."
Oh, I had just a generic question. On page 11, it says that there, each school council can designate a safety planning committee who then, who is composed of the following. And then it says, "Before this committee adopts this plan, they shall hold a public meeting, and the following people should be notified." Does that take place? I mean, I've never, I've never seen a public meeting at a school, but maybe that doesn't mean it doesn't do it. I'm just curious if they do.
I would be surprised if it is, if it does take place. I've never seen it either.
I believe the site school, average, their safety committee meeting, where these are being addressed, at, you know, holiday, sort of, but I posted on the website or the school bulletin, and stuff like that, to say that it is, the meeting is taking place for this company agenda. I do know I got a few questions, and I, related to that question this school year, can respond in that way. There does need to be people out there that the public can't attend that meeting.
Yeah, I just wonder if it's, if it actually is said that it is a public meeting, and do they actually notify this list of people about their individual school safety plan in public hearing?
I do know in the context, I had related to that question, that was being done.
It was, okay.
I have to verify with every single site that they did that, but, thank you, thank you. But I do know that in my communication with the sites that had that question, it was being done.
And then on page 12, do the schools actually include in their safety plans the assessment of the current status of school crime committed on campuses and at school-related functions? When you review those safety plans, do you see a section on school crime? I'm not sure what the definition of that is, but-
I'm trying to remember back through the plans now.
I'm just curious, it's just a-
Are you asking whether that's stated? I mean, that's definitely a part of the discussion at the school about the school's safety plan.
Right.
And it weighs heavily on the safety plan.
Whether or not the specifics of the, that school crime data is on the plan, I don't believe so, but there's discussion about it.
So an assessment is occurring, which is what it asks for here.
Okay. And then page 13, which is the new 13 and 14 is on our, on our dais. It ends at the bottom of 13 and then continues, is to prevent bullying, hazing, and cyberbullying. And I presume that cyberbullying reference is to the summary at the very beginning of this document under AR 040. It says regulate, the last, the last sentence of that second, that summary says, "Regulation also includes a new optional item requiring that the plan includes strategies to prevent cyberbullying." I guess I'm not quite sure that sentence, because, and one, it says optional, but then it says requiring, and on our plan, or on our policy, it's really, may also include. So it's not, it's not required. It is optional, but what is the intent? Is the intent to make it mandatory or is the intent to make it optional? It says, "Regulation also includes a new optional item requiring that the plan includes strategies," where our wording says it may include. And if this is what refers to cyberbullying, and it's the only reference I can find to cyberbullying in the 05, 0450.
Well, doesn't optional and may, aren't those in the same spirit?
My only concern is that in the summary, it says requiring.
Requiring the option.
So if the word requiring wasn't in the summary, if it just said include the new optional item, that the plan includes strategies to prevent cyberbullying, that it makes sense with our plan. But somebody added the word requiring. I'm just concerned why. Was the intent to actually require it?
Yeah, I can see that. I mean, the way I read it was, is that it's optional to require it, but-
But is that, then are we supposed to be making the decision? Are we supposed to be saying, okay, it's okay to make it may, or do we want to say it must? If the option is on our part, then I'm happy with the way it is, but I'm just curious if somebody thought we were requiring it.
Well, so here, right back here, it says may also include.
Right.
Well, I guess the bigger question for us is, do we want it, do we want to require that? Because we can change the language to reflect our wishes.
Well, because it covers so many things, it's got 10 different things. I think the word may is probably appropriate, because if you change the may to must, then you're including 10 different items. So I think may is fine, but I just wonder if somebody else had some idea as to, if they thought it was being required, it's not.
I would suggest we go with this language.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions, amendments?
I don't have any more. I don't have anywhere, I don't have anywhere near that many for anything else, so rest assured that the rest will go smoothly.
No, that's, that's fine. It's really good for us to hear what we're all thinking about these things. Well, do we, given that the changes that we've requested are primarily mechanical in nature, do we want to go ahead and approve D1 with these changes? Or do we want this to come back as a second reading?
May I weigh in on this? This is one of the things that we cut down a lot of trees about, and if these are simple, straightforward changes, and we don't expect much controversy or, you know, to be denying the opportunity for public input because of the nature of these changes, I would hope that we would waive that requirement for policy changes like this and go ahead and approve them.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the, I'm going to, the changes to the Selected Board Policies, Administrative and Administrative Regulations in the 0000s policy series, including deletions of a list of policies.
As amended?
As amended.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, no. And I guess we can just make a note that Cordero will be listed as absent on, on each of these motions. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to D2. First Reading of Board Policy, 1313 Civility. I see Barbakiani offered this, but Dr. Sarvis, would you like to discuss it or introduce it?
Yes, this is something we felt the need for for quite a while. We've asked legal counsel to weigh in on this as well, and we think we have a policy that's a workable policy, although only time would tell.
Mr. Price, did you, are you here to answer questions, or did you want to present anything in conjunction with this item?
I've looked at multiple policies of this type, and my feeling was that this provided the tools that would be helpful for staff and for members of the public to be able to deal with situations that occur from time to time without overreaching in ways that some of the other policies that I've looked at did. Carpentry has something like this in effect now, and I understand that it has worked effectively during some instances when trouble has occurred.
And staff feels able to implement this themselves? I mean, I guess that would be my question, is, is there a comfort level with the staff in asking them to do this?
Yes, there is.
I just had a question about how you operationalize this vis-à-vis item 7. Do we have a copy of this policy on hand at Board meetings, and if we have disruptive behavior, we hand it to the offending individual?
Well, we can certainly do that. We have a drawer right there for the Board President and the Vice President, and we keep our complaint policies right there in the drawer so that we can hand those out, and this could be one of the things that we keep handy.
I just want to know where to go.
Right, and the setting would not necessarily be here, though, for this particular policy.
It might be an IEP meeting.
So you're asking if it was, yeah, off-site even. You know, we probably should make copies of it, if we approve it, available at the site so that, and maybe give a little bit of training to the principals for their staff as well.
Point number eight, dissemination of disinformation. I mean, how often, to what do, it just seemed like overkill to me. do, it just seemed like overkill to me. You guys put this out in newsletters and send it to parents, school accountability reports, district mailings?
I, I, I think you could easily insert, I mean, I'll defer to Craig on this, but "may," and that would give you the discretion rather than "shall." That way, you didn't have to disseminate through every single one of those avenues.
For the most part, since we've been quiet about this for so long, we wanted the initial information to get out to people and be disseminated district-wide so that it was very clear that we had a policy like this in place. And, and I'll defer to Craig Price as well, but that was clearly the intention here, was to let people know.
But that's a one-time thing. But then what about next year at this time? What about six months from now? What about three, you know, the beginning of next year, midterm next year?
And we could change it to initial or something like that.
How often do you have to do this? And is it overkill? And we're, you know, this is one of those policies aimed for a specific reason.
Right.
And it always kills me to have to make a policy for minority and not the majority, but...
Mrs. Parker?
The minority are on every single school site, though, and on a regular basis. And so, it's not the same minority, just, you know.
Yeah, different.
I know that each site is dealing with maybe three or four individuals that are like this at the most, we hope, but each Scott's site isn't.
Well, I do, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you. I do agree with you, though. You know, seven years from now, if we look back at this policy and we say, oh, my gosh, we don't see it annually in newsletters, school accountability reports, district mailings, you know, are we, are we not abiding by our policy?
Are we being selective in, in enforcement? I mean, it's, my concern is this has to be not selective. It's got to be done uniformly in, in situations. I would rather see "may" than "shall."
I, I think, just, just as an observer, my concern is that if you don't, if you include the stronger language of "shall" and you don't have compliance, then the very people that you're trying to control will use that against you because you were out of compliance.
Well, maybe we need to look at then this listing of avenues for dissemination, because I'm not sure we want to say that we want to include it in every single one of these times, things on a regular basis. It seems to me something like this, it might be useful to be, go, go in the packet that goes to families, Mrs. Parker?
I, I actually think it should just be posted instead of disseminating in any way. Just say that "shall be posted at every district site." And then you're not worrying. I mean, that way, when, I mean, it usually happens in a location where you could point to a wall and say, here's your copy, but, you know, this, this has been here, and these are the rules. Sorry.
I think the use of the conjunctive at the end of the sentence there is intended to mean that all of these things are not supposed to occur. It's a list of alternatives for distribution, which could include any one of those, or could include something else. So, it's not necessarily a, a list of all the things that you're supposed to include.
You may say that, but I didn't interpret it that way.
Well, that's what, well, I'll leave it to the, to the instructors.
Yeah, layman's, layman's language.
Well, and I, I think the point that has been raised, though, is that it'd be useful to know in practice how we're going to implement this. And so, if this is our guiding language, it doesn't really tell us what we intend to do. And I do, the idea of posting makes sense. It's a good idea.
You could say, "Information in this policy shall be posted and may be disseminated," et cetera, et cetera.
Ms. Limon?
And I was just gonna say that the other piece is that earlier on, we say that we're going to hand it to someone. So, it'll be disseminated on an as-needed basis. So, I guess if it's posted, it's posted because it's accessible to everybody, but we're going to pull it out if we need it. So, it covers both.
Yeah. I think posting is good, though, because hopefully that means staff will become more familiar with it because they'll see it hopefully on a regular basis. And, and it is easy to point to that quickly if someone, if there is an issue and you are having to go around and find a copy. If it's posted, it's right there. So, maybe the proposed language of "information in this policy shall be posted and may be disseminated."
Good. I have that. That's good.
My, my one other point on that is "may be disseminated to all staff and parent guardians through," since it's...
Okay. Do we have a motion on this one?
I actually have more suggestions on this.
Okay.
I just wanted a little...
Want to jump again? Go ahead.
Um, in the first paragraph where it says, "The district is committed to maintaining orderly educational and administrative processes, processes," change "in" to "to," to keeping schools and administrative offices free from disruptions.
To keep.
To keeping.
Okay.
And then on paragraph four, where it says, "If he or she reenters any district facility," I was questioning the need for a separate paragraph on that because it's, if we don't, if we have it as a separate paragraph, then I think that we need to specify who those he or she, he or she is. And it's an individual that does not conform or correct his or her behavior. So, I was wondering if we could simply eliminate the number four and include everything in that paragraph in paragraph three.
That confused me, too. So, I agree with that, Jane.
Okay. And then on what, that would, that would then renumber the paragraphs.
You mean, simply collapse the two?
Yes. So, get rid of the number four and bring "if" up to the end of number three. And what is the current number six? It says, "The employee supervisor shall consult with the superintendent's designee." And I, I wanted to know, "The employee supervisor shall consult," is, is that the superintendent or designee, superintendent's designee?
That's generally our language, so that's, that looks like an omission.
It usually says, "The superintendent or his or her designee."
Right. Okay. So, can we change to that language?
We could do that.
And then, yeah, my last thing was what we've already covered on number eight.
Um, number one, on page one of two, I would just italicize abusive behavior. And then I just wanted clarification. I want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. So, what we now collapsed into bullet point number three, so they just can't come back for 30 days or seven days if they're a parent or school. We're just not allowing them back on the campus. And that's fine. We're not going to get in trouble. Mr. Price?
Mr. Price?
This is in the situation where an individual has been requested to leave. And so, the basis for doing this is set for the code. So, that presently exists. It's just being included in something that can be distributed so that people will be fairly warned and hopefully will be discouraged from further behavior. The short answer to your question is, that's right. We won't get in trouble for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, if we're going to make a copy of this available at the sites, we might want to include the, a copy of the California Ed Code and these penal codes here. So, I mean, just so they have them handy.
Okay. We, we can certainly do that.
I mean, if you're telling someone you might be guilty of a misdemeanor, you might want to have something to support that.
Have that stapled to it.
Yeah.
It, it seems to me like it quotes Section 44811 of the Ed Code in this paragraph that was collapsed. When you look at the next page and it describes 44811, it talks more like classwork or extracurricular activities, which is fine when it comes to the seven days for a school. But does that also cover this building, district facility? Or is 44811 really intended to cover activities on a school?
Well, I don't have the code section in front of me, but I think that these, these provisions cover the school facilities where people interact. So, I think it would cover this building.
Then maybe look at 44811 where it says disruption of classwork or, I mean, if there's a broader definition, because it implies here that you're guilty of misdemeanor in this facility. But yet, when you refer to 44811 in the next page, sort of gives a different impression.
I, would you like me to read 44811? Because I have it.
Oh, you have it?
I do. "Any parent, guardian, or other person whose conduct in a place where a school employee is required to be in the course of his or her duties materially disrupts classwork or extracurricular activities or involves substantial disorder is guilty of a misdemeanor."
That would be here.
And so, it's essentially a school employee...
But it doesn't say classwork or something?
Uh, "disrupts classwork or extracurricular activities or involves substantial disorder." So, there's all these, it doesn't have to be classwork or extracurricular, extracurricular activity.
That would then include Marlon Sumter's office, Carrie Mills' office, for example. Good.
Right. And it's any parent, guardian, or other person.
Yeah. If there's a way to change the definition of 44811 on, I'd like it at least looked at. But if there's any way, right now, it just says disruption of classwork. If there's a way to, to change that definition to make it a broader encompassing thing, at least I'd like it looked at.
I think you're talking about the, on page, on page two of two, just the descriptor, correct?
Yes, on Legal Reference Education Code, 44811.
I mean, we could, I think we could probably...
Oh, that's where you are.
We could add to that.
We could, we could add to that.
Yeah. So, it's just description of, so it's essentially disruption of classwork or extracurricular activities.
Or...
Or involves substantial disorder.
Yeah.
Now, I understand.
Okay. Yeah. It, it, okay. Because it references 44811, and when you look at that for, it just didn't seem to apply to the entire paragraph.
Yeah, I actually...
Thank you.
Noted that, too. And, and we also do cite Ed Code 32 to 10, "Willful disturbance of public school or meetings offense." So, that would cover what's happening here. Okay. Ms. Limon?
Sorry, one last thing. As I was reading what is now number four, but was number five on page one, "When violence is directed against an employee or a theft of property," should we add, "Or theft of property occurs, employees shall," because we're not really talking about the violence directed at the property. I, I think, well, we might be, but...
Or theft of property occurs. So, just include the word "occurs."
Occurs, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Is that it? I think we've done some good fine tuning here.
Well, I'd like to thank Craig Price for his work on this as well.
It was a very civil discussion.
I hope the implementation will be equally civil. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Board Policy 1313 as revised.
And I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Do you have to waive the second reading or just?
Now, by our policy, it says we may waive. Should we be actively waiving that or simply adopting? Or, or maybe include the waiver?
In the motion.
In the motion. I move to, to waive the second reading and adopt.
The heading for your conference item says that you can take action. So, certainly you can. And I would recommend for clarity, if anybody goes, ever goes back and looks, that you also provide that you're waiving the second reading.
All right. So, I will withdraw what's on the table and start over again with, "I move that we waive the second reading of Board Policy 1313 and adopt the policy as revised."
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes. Should we go back to D1 and also specify that we are waiving the first reading on that one?
Well, I'll just make a new motion.
I thought you did.
I didn't. No. I'll make a, a new motion in D1 that we waive the second reading of the Board Policy 0000s series.
And then continue with the rest of the motion?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes.
Thank you for catching that.
Yes. That's good. All right. We have moved on. Oh, thank you, Mr. Price. We've moved on to D3, First Reading of Revisions to Board Policy 2210, Administrative Leeway and Absence of Governing Board Policy, Retitled Administrative Discretion Regarding Board Policy. Mr. Smith?
Yeah. This item really revolves around the fact that the board needs to acknowledge that program requirements are suspended along with, or during the time that the Tier Three Categorical Flexibility is in effect from 2008, 2009 through to 2012, 2013, although we hope it's going to be extended. So, this just memorializes that you're acknowledging that, you know, the program requirements for these various categoricals are suspended, and we don't have to adhere to those program requirements during the time that the flexibility period's in effect.
I actually had a question. Could you give us several examples of when this might occur?
Well, remember, right now, we're taking 30% of our Tier Three Categoricals and moving them from the restricted side of the ledger to the unrestricted general fund. The corresponding requirement is that, or, is that right now, we don't have to comply with the program guidelines for those various categoricals. So, you know, let's say it's a pupil retention block grant. We don't have to use the monies for those things specified in the Ed Code or governing regulations for that purpose. We can use it for any general purpose.
Board members? Questions? Comments?
I move we waive the first reading, or second reading, and adopt the changes to BP 2210.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. D4, First Reading of Revisions to Board Policies and Administrative Regulations in the 3000s series. And I don't think I'll list them all here now, but Mr. Smith, would you like, again, to make any comments?
Um, this is just a list of board policies in the 3000s that CSBA has furnished as sample policies. We've went through them and made corrections where we've felt they were necessary, and we'd like the board's input on them at this point.
And some of these are brand new, so they may take more scrutiny. Would anyone like to begin? I, I have a couple of comments, but I'll wait.
Um, my first one was on just page 29, part of Board Policy 3100. And it was really a question from Mr. Smith on, where it says, "The board shall adopt a formal resolution that provides for classification of fund balances in the general fund and is compliant with Government Accounting Standards Board Statement 54." Where in the timeline does this happen? Will it happen as part of the budget adoption?
Actually, Meg's working on this right now, and I wasn't sure if it had come to the board when I was gone at one of the meetings. So, if it has not been before you, it'll be before you shortly, probably at the next meeting or so.
I think we got it in a...
Board brief.
Board brief.
Okay. But it hasn't come to us for, for action?
No.
Yes, I don't remember it coming to us for action. And it was one of those things where sometimes we get such enormous documents that I'm not sure if it's on page, you know, 157, that I've adopted a resolution that I, I missed. So...
Yeah. All right. And I don't recall, because I, I recall reading about it, but now I don't recall where I read it.
Okay.
Well, given that discussion, we will make sure it comes to you for adoption, or that we note in the board brief that it already came to you for adoption.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I would think it probably hasn't come for formal adoption, but it would happen before year-end, since this will go into effect for the next fiscal year.
Okay. And then, my next one is on page 35, but I don't know if somebody else has something.
I have a big, big question on lottery funds. It talks about it being separate. It talks about specifically identified. It talks about the board and community members and staff participating in determining how they should be spent, advisory groups, school site councils. Do we do any of that on lottery?
Well, obviously, we account for it separately, and we follow the restrictions in law with regard to what it cannot be spent on. I'm looking at...
Were we asked how it should be spent, any community group in town?
No. No, not other than through the normal budgetary process.
But it does go out to the school site councils.
That's correct.
I mean, so it follows that.
Yeah, it's definitely discussed at the school site councils, absolutely.
But there are restrictions on how it can be used, so it's one of those things I call, you know, quasi-unrestricted, because for the most part, it's unrestricted, but not completely.
And those site reps, just for the public to know, are elected by the parents at the schools. Ms. Limon? Actually, if we could go back a few pages to 28, under the item Budget Development and Adoption Process, in the middle of the page there, the second paragraph talks about, "The board shall annually establish budget priorities based on identified district needs and goals and unrealistic projections of available funds." The original, which is on page three, if you go back, says, specifically aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities for approval by the board. I don't know if this is the distinction with the difference or not. The word "goals" is in the new language, "board-established priorities" is in the old language. I know we're making an effort to expend all of our funds in alignment with our goals, and I, maybe just using the word "goals" is sufficient, but I thought I'd ask what other board members felt. Yes.
We thought the word "goals" was an important one, because sometimes when we talk about objectives, then people go looking for the board objectives, or when we talk about, you know, the board's focus, then we go looking for, what is the focus? Is that the mission statement? And we thought, since we do adopt goals formally at the board level, that we thought this is a useful word.
I'm speaking, I'm sorry, where is the change?
On page 28, the second paragraph under Budget Development and Adoption Process.
Yeah, I got that. So how is it different from the former one?
So, the former one reads, "Projects specifically aligns projected expenditures with board-established priorities." I guess.
So it's actually the next paragraph down that I was thinking, okay, where it says the superintendent or designee shall oversee the preparation?
It's a different paragraph in the original than it was in the new one. I guess I was just wondering if it should say "board-established goals," more as direction towards staff as opposed to just notifying the public what, you know, that these are general goals.
So, so change "based on identified district" to "based on board-established goals"?
Well, I mean, I could say, I would keep "needs," but maybe just add, "based on identified district needs and board-established goals."
Of board-established goals.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I just want to keep going the theme that we're always harkening back to our focus goals, and this is just a place to kind of codify that. Okay, moving forward, are there other items?
On page 35, which is continued on page 47, I just want to make sure I understand the very last statement. It has been a discussion over the past year, administrative fees. Is that where we're correcting this collection of administrative fees that we've been talking about, that it's now, it's very specific on MOUs?
That's correct.
And so PTAs and all those are no longer an issue if we adopt this?
That would be correct. The only time you would be seeing indirect costs charged to local donation accounts or any local entity like that would be if it was incorporated in an MOU, although I do have a question about the effective date.
That, I was going to say, is that retroactive to the start of this year? I would move that it be effective as of the start of this year. We've been promised this language for a long time.
That would be useful.
And there are PTAs out there wondering.
Right.
Still, so.
I just, hopefully that could be in the motion, because I don't think you want to include it here.
Language, no, but we will, with the understanding that, I have a, I have a couple on this AR as well, 3290. My first question on this one was, in the gift solicitation, where, paragraph on the first page, "In order to ensure proper coordination, all gift solicitations of funds or property in the name of Santa Barbara school districts must be pre-approved by the deputy superintendent. This includes fundraising activities sponsored by ASB organizations or by other student One of my pet peeves is that we get all those fundraising approvals in our board packets, and they come to the board for approval, even though in Ed Code, almost all of them, we could have a designee do it. And my question is, in changing this language on gift solicitation, can it be the practice, then, that the deputy superintendent approves the fundraising, and it doesn't need to be additionally approved by the board, since you could be our designee? Is that the intention of this paragraph, I'm hoping?
Yeah, the intention was, actually, all fundraising activities could be approved by staff, and a lot of fundraising activities could be approved at the site level.
As long as it's by a designee instead of coming to the board.
However, I was a little uncomfortable with the ASBs being under the direct control of the site administrators with regard to fundraising, so that's why we inserted the deputy superintendent, and the intent was that it would all be done at administrative level rather than coming to the board.
Great. And then, following up on page 47, my one question there was on number six, where it says, "Non-cash donations, art, furniture, equipment, et cetera, must be approved by the deputy superintendent before acceptance." I'm wondering if we can put a minimum donation level, sort of amount, before, because, you know, books, you know, a computer monitor, there, I think it needs to rise to a certain level before it comes to you for approval of acceptance.
I'm fine with that.
And what would you suggest as an amount?
Well, it depends on whether we're talking about silver, Apple stock.
Who would normally be approving them if it wasn't you? I mean, if it was at a lesser amount?
It would be the site.
It would be the site.
Site administration.
So if it's, yeah, magazines for art projects, I mean.
Sometimes it's even.
How does over $1,000?
That's what more, what I was thinking of, between one and five somewhere. If you think one's too low, I would say five.
Let's start with 1,000, and, so, non-cash donations worth over $1,000, art, furniture, equipment, et cetera, it must be approved by the deputy superintendent before acceptance.
Maybe valued.
Valued.
Yeah.
Over.
Just so we know what we're voting on, any rough estimate of how much that change in the administrative fees is costiness?
We had data on that before, and I'm thinking it's not that significant. I'm thinking of between $40,000 and $60,000 is my recollection.
I had a couple of questions on this policy. We say on page 34, "All gifts, grants, and bequests shall become district property," this is kind of in the middle of the page, "Donors are encouraged to donate all gifts to the district rather than to a particular school." Yet, so many, in fact, the majority of donations that we get, certainly those ones that we approve at our regular meetings, are earmarked for a specific school and a specific program. So, why is this language here?
I think, you know, it's standard protocol that the board receive all gifts, and the onus is on the donor of those gifts to prescribe, you know, or how it should be used, but ultimately, the board has discretion on whether they want to accept that gift or not, because there might be a gift giving to, given to Dos Pueblos that you don't think's appropriate, or whatever the case may be, or may create equity issues somehow with the other high schools, so I think that's why it's in there.
I just, and I understand that, I wouldn't want to discourage people, however, by making them think that the money they give wouldn't necessarily go to the program they had intended it to go to.
I don't think that's the intent. Also, we also wrestle with, you know, the sites that basically, the sites don't own their own facilities, the district owns everything, and the board has general governance over the entire district, so.
Right.
It does reinforce that these are district facilities and not owned by the site.
Yes, and I think that we certainly make that clear to people when they make especially large gifts. On page 35, and this gets back to the notion of the approval by the deputy superintendent, we have you approving any written document, mailing list, or other related document used for solicitation. I'm trying to envision the workload here, and thinking, you don't want to be approving every flyer that goes out for every fundraiser, correct?
No.
On page 35. So, is there, do we want to look at modifying that in some way, or, or site designee? Who approves those things right now?
That's a tough one. We often have Barbara Chiani looking these over, but in reality, we get some of them after the fact. We look them over after they become a problem, and we say, "Next time you send this out, it has to be written in a certain way." So, as superintendent's designee, we take a look at these after the fact all too often.
But this says, "Before pursuing formal discussions." I, to me, this seemed like onerous in terms of workload. On the other hand, we don't want, we want someone to look at some things before they go out.
I know, it does seem onerous. We run into far too many problems, we'd like, we'd like to gain more control over it. We, on a yearly basis, review these kinds of policies, this is one of those critical policies, with our site administrators, only to discover the next year that we have a letter going out that actually violates, you know, free appropriate education for all students, or something like that. So, we would like to try to gain more control over it upfront.
This might, this is not a suggestion for changing this policy now, but maybe a template needs to be developed, that then we provide to the schools, and then those are given to fundraisers, and they can fill in their specifics and add graphics or artwork or something, but each group is not then creating its own document that requires that level of scrutiny.
That could be, could we change that to superintendent-designee, and try to get prior approval to gain more control over this problem?
I read this as two different categories. The first sentence begins, "Formal discussions," sounds like, okay, we're going with Mr. Yulin, Ellings, and/or Workington, do some formal discussions on a donation. That's one thing. Then it goes on to say, "Solicitation in general, like mass mailings." To me, that, it's almost like two different topics in one paragraph.
Right.
That was kind of my take as well, because certainly, if we're looking at a very large gift and a group, say the San Marcos is going out for their track, or something along those lines, at that point, you're having the kind of discussions you're describing early on, and then the materials that flow from, from that come out, but for a car wash, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, the formal discussions is what, you know, a mass solicitation letter is one thing, that's not formal, that's just, let's put it out there and see who comes.
I'd like Barbara to continue to do the second part, that's what I'd like. But, I mean, I think, I think you're right. I see that as two different issues. If you look at the first part, like the, you know, Virgil Ellings thing, you know, we had to do some research on it, find out, hey, you know, we can't accept this unless it's liquidated immediately, it was kind of higher level type, MOU-type stuff. I'd rather not be burdened with the second portion.
In fact, with Virgil Ellings, those have been big enough that I've sat down directly with him, we've negotiated formally, we've put it in writing, but those are the exceptions, actually.
Well.
And you're right, there are a lot of fundraisers that are, people are trying to solicit funds for.
In that first sentence, maybe we could say, "Before pursuing formal discussions with any potential donor for large capital gifts," or, does that work? And then break out the second piece? It might not just be capital, though, for, I don't know.
Large donations.
So then, how do we define large donations? Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe we want to spend a little bit more time on this one.
Would you like us to grapple with this and bring it back to you? We can certainly do that.
No. No, I mean, the reason I don't is because this is part of AR 3290, and we need to get that piece passed.
We do need to get it put in place.
So I think we need to figure it out now.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, if you look at the paragraph in front of this, when it talks about, "Encouraged to undertake fundraising and solicitation activities," it just seems that sentence might be more applicable after activities. Any written documents, mailing lists, and other related documents used for our solicitation needs to be approved by somebody.
Okay, so we could move that second line up to the previous paragraph?
Where it talks about fundraising and solicitation. And then.
And then say, "By a."
By who?
Superintendent or designee.
Designee.
So it would be superintendent or designee, or deputy superintendent or designee?
I'd say superintendent-designee.
Right. Superintendent or designee.
Okay, are we clear on what we've done here? All right, so then, the remaining sentence, "Before pursuing formal discussions with any potential donor for large gifts, approval is required from the deputy superintendent."
Do you want to use a certain dollar threshold, like donations in excess of X?
And what, what number would you suggest, Mr. Smith?
I wish I had data in front of me.
Well, I can tell you that, you know.
Yeah, just judging from the donation.
Yeah.
I mean, we get $10,000 donations to the theater at Santa Barbara High. We get donations from their foundation. I mean, do we want to have formal discussion with them?
I mean, I think it really needs to be a lot.
Large, 50,000?
Like 50,000, maybe?
50,000.
We could start with 50 and see how that works.
And, and this would only be, I mean, I just want to be clear that, like, for example, if the Santa Barbara High School Education Foundation said, thought, you know, we want to go raise $100,000 from a specific donor, they could go ahead and go do that without involving us in any way, it's only at the time when they'd say, hey, district, we want to use your letterhead, we want the superintendent to be involved, we want to give the money to you, then it would require a discussion.
Although, in my experience, quite often, earlier in the process, people are saying, this is for the school district, and the implication is the school district is going to accept that project and run with it. And so, we have to be careful, I think, to involve the district at that point where, before the formal discussion is pursued, we don't want to give false hope if it's not something the district wanted to do.
Didn't recently, I read that this high school foundation at Santa Barbara High School gave $100,000?
Well, the Santa Barbara High School Foundation typically has been raising about $100,000, and it, their foundation board decides how it's going to be spent at Santa Barbara High School.
That's what it sounded like to me in the article.
Right, but they haven't, they've solicited on behalf of the Santa Barbara High School Education Foundation, not.
The district.
We don't have control over how that money is spent, let's put it that way. Their board controls it. But it's kind of a fine line between when they're going out to ask for money. But to me, this would be more about maybe a group on campus that doesn't have a separate board, nonprofit, what it's more about, you know.
Could be any co-curricular group on campus, for example.
I think the protection is that you don't want something gaining momentum without the district squarely behind it, and then we're the last to know.
Which is why on page 47, the inclusion of the Santa Barbara Education Foundation as a possible conduit. as a possible conduit for donations, I think, is a good idea, because it offers groups that don't want to establish their own 501-3Cs that opportunity to funnel, page 47. It gives them the opportunity to use that organization and funnel the money through them. I'm glad it says, "The solicitations may be directed," or "May be a preferable manner," because I don't think we could require groups to go through the Ed Foundation, but it certainly is an option that, I think we, it would be nice to start encouraging that more and more, because our district, unlike a large number of districts, has a proliferation of independent foundations that are all centered around a specific project. And as board liaison on the Ed Foundation, I've learned that many districts have just one foundation, and all projects go through that, and it does streamline things, and in many ways, ensure that, that more benefit comes to more schools, because it's, the gifts tend to be spread more widely across schools, as opposed to going just to individual schools. But, you know, the, what is it, the horse is out of the barn on this one in our district. And so, I think, however, over time, we might be able to preclude organizations from having to start up their own 501-3Cs if we can direct them to the Ed Foundation, and slowly over time, we might get a more unified approach to giving in the community.
On page 47, just below that, it's a broad statement that the superintendent shall report to us the gifts accepted by the superintendent, president, for the benefit of the district. That's a pretty broad statement, all-inclusive kind of statement. I know we have our donation list.
We give that to you in a donation list. There are some times when they're very large gifts that I'll send you a separate correspondence.
This covers what we're currently doing?
Well, here's my question, and maybe I'll need to look this up in ed code, but we are approving currently the gifts, we approve the acceptance.
Yes.
Is this changing practice? Is it possible to change practice so that the board does not have to approve?
Approve each of those?
That it's the, that it's the designee?
Boy, we would need to look that up.
I might be able to look it up as we're talking.
That may be a credible option, though.
So are you saying that we would no longer get that list, then, of donations with each meeting?
We would get a list, but we wouldn't be, it might be in a board brief instead of, because it wouldn't be for action.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's useful for the board to see those donations, so that when we're out in the community, we can thank people and know the level of support that's coming, flowing to us.
Possibly, specific items over some threshold amount?
I think the reason the board accepts them is because of the tax consequences to the donors. You know, we basically furnish them a letter, you know, saying the board approved the donate, you know, accepting the donations on this date, and we send them out to all those people.
But it could be that the district accepted it.
Potentially.
I just want to see what ed code says about that.
I will say, we do like consolidating that list, so that on a monthly basis, we've got it all in one place. While you're taking a look at this, I am not clear about the changes on page 35, and where the sentence, "Faculty, staff, and students are encouraged," is moved to.
It's not moved.
Oh, it's not moved?
Added after the word "activities."
Activities.
Is...
I'm sorry, where?
Page 35, "Faculty, staff, and students are encouraged to undertake fundraising and solicitation activities."
Yes.
The next sentence stays the same, but then the sentence at the bottom of the next paragraph moves up, so after, follow the guidelines set forth in this policy comes the sentence, "This includes approval of any written documents."
Yes.
And then at the end says, "By superintendent designee."
Designee. And then before...
And that gets moved?
Yes.
Yeah, to the end of that paragraph.
That last sentence in that three-line paragraph gets moved up to the paragraph above it.
Okay.
And then there's a standalone sentence, paragraph below that, which keeps the sentence "Before pursuing formal discussions."
Okay, I think I understand that.
For any potential donor, for donations in excess of $50,000.
I'll have Eric take a look at it.
Approval is required from the superintendent slash designee.
And, "Under gift solicitation, a third of the way in, in order to ensure proper coordination," have we changed all of those from deputy superintendent to superintendent designee? And later in that same paragraph, ending in "Through the deputy superintendent includes," have we changed that to superintendent designee as well?
I think so.
Okay.
That was my understanding. I think it's, we might as well be consistent, and that's how we, in so many places, we do that. Well, Mrs. Parker is also looking that up. I wanted to address some items on, on page 36, which is AR 3311, under bids. When I was reading this, I noticed that, what jumped out at me was, you know, that it says, "The district shall seek competitive bids through advertisement from contracts involving an expenditure of $15,000 or more." And so I called up Mr. Hettinge, just because I wanted to be reminded of the uniform public construction cost accounting process, where in fact, you can utilize an informal bidding process. And as we talked more, it occurred to him that we may want to include the lease, lease-back policies as well. Maybe he's talked to you about that.
Yeah, we'll make both those revisions.
Okay.
Because we're actually under uniform cost accounting, not required to go to competitive bid unless we're in excess of $125,000. And obviously, you know all about the lease, lease-back mechanism, so...
Do we need to pull out just this, 3311, then, to come back to us, or are we comfortable with knowing that these additional pieces are going to be added in?
No, I'd like to see them.
Yeah, I think we need to bring it back.
Okay.
3311, we'll bring back with revised language.
Okay, I think so, too. There'll be a lot of new information there.
Because I think it's confusing to leave the conventional bid limit language in there, since the board has already adopted a different, you know, mechanism, and then we'll put that language in.
Yeah, I mean, it jumped at me right away, and if the public was reading it, I think...
I didn't catch it.
Yeah. That's because I'm always hoping that we can sometimes expedite the bidding process.
And I'll just jump back to 3290. It, it's from ed code 41032, which simply states that the governing board of any school district may accept on behalf of, in the name of the district, gifts, donations, bequests, and devices, devices, I should say, that are made to the district or to, or for the benefit of any school or college. So it does need to come to the board for approval. There's no...
Yeah.
Okay.
I've never seen where it's not done that way, so that was my hunch.
All right. So, where was the language on that that we need, did we need to, we didn't make a change?
Well...
Talked about formal discussions.
On the second, page 47, where it's under board notification of gifts. It's, I think that we just probably need to delete that whole paragraph, because these have to come to the board anyway. The deputy superintendent will report to the district's Board of Education the gifts accepted by the superintendent, president, because they aren't accepted by them, they're accepted by us.
Okay.
So I would suggest the elimination of that paragraph, unless you want to put in a paragraph that says...
Board approval of gifts.
But I'm trying to remember. Yeah, maybe we do need to put in a board approval of gifts. The deputy superintendent will report to the district Board of Education, gifts offered to the district for approval by the board.
I think that's good. Why don't you read that one more time?
Where's that going?
So the title there would be board acceptance of gifts.
Or board approval.
Approval, okay.
Board approval of gifts?
No, it says "accept" in the ed code language, so let's say "accept."
Okay.
Because we vote to accept them.
We vote to accept them. The deputy superintendent will report to the district's Board of Education, the gifts offered, I don't even remember how I said it already, gifts offered...
For acceptance by the board?
Offered to the district.
Offered to the district.
Oh, for the benefit, offered, for the benefit of the district.
Offered for the benefit of the district.
For board approval. I've got two paws there.
For board approval, or for board acceptance. For board acceptance, for acceptance by the board. You got that?
That's good.
Did I say it 10 different ways and now you got it?
Got it.
Okay, all right, well, we are still in the 3,000 series. On page, I know I should have done this ahead of time, I'm sorry. On page 50, there's a few, I would just like to add a few mechanical pieces. Under summer meal program, on page 50...
Page 50?
Yes.
Got it.
First paragraph, can we hyphenate "well nourished"?
Sure.
And I think "non-school" is probably hyphenated. That's in the third paragraph down, where it says, "The district may serve meals at a non-school site," two words hyphenated. I had a question, though, about this. Does this mean, and I actually, when we get to 3552, this definition of open site, does that mean that children who are not our students, and of any age, as long as they're still children, may have access to the meals? Is that my understanding?
Where are you looking?
I'm sorry, this, it's page 53, at the top. This is more just an informational question on my part. I wanted to know, where it says, "The site provides meals to all children in the area."
That's my understanding of that, that's how it works.
And that's what's happened in the past.
Okay.
On page 53, number 1, 2, and 3, those are just mechanical, but we should probably italicize those.
Okay, got it.
Because I was looking for definitions for everything, so...
That's good.
And then, and then on page 41 and 42, it's also just mechanical. 1, 2, and 3, we should probably take away the quotation marks, and just italicize positive certification, qualified negative certification.
Why take away the quotation marks?
Yeah.
No, why?
Because it's a definition, and just to keep the format consistent. So if we italicize, instead of taking away the quotations...
Okay.
They become terms like all the others that we're defining. Okay, any other questions or comments on any of the remaining ARs?
I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve, that we waive the second reading, and approve the board policy revisions in the 3,000s, with a notation that AR 3311 has been pulled, and that for AR 3290, it goes into effect as of, retroactively, as of July 1, 2010.
Okay.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? None? Motion passes. I just realized it's 11, and we were scheduled to take a break at 10:30. Would, would everyone like to stretch their legs for a minute, or...
Five minutes would be great.
Five minutes? Okay, we'll come back in five minutes.
Thank you.